He misclicked.
What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching Stevie session and today we are with Traddad from Sweden. Uh Traddad played the WSOP three hundred marathon and decided to ship it. So I was talking with Traddad about it and he told me. This is not his average stake and he actually misclicked into the three hundred dollar Sunday marathon.
Huh, great.
He started, he started with fifteen big fourteen big blinds.
Oh my god.
Wait, so you spotted it with thirty?
If, yeah, he was trying to play the thirty. But yeah, so I mean, if you're gonna misclick, you might as well take first place in one of the toughest fields on GG. Like, this is not an easy field. Like, it's even tough to sell action in this one because it's so, so interesting.
Oh yeah, it's a, it's a reg fest, right? It's a long format, it's a big buy-in, it's a small field, like.
Yeah.
This is just like people who are direct buying, in other words.
Yeah. So, uh, pretty, pretty cool, so like, yeah. Traddad, you here?
Uh, yes, so my biggest win before this was, uh, one tenth of this prize. Uh, I won the bounty builder on PokerStars, uh, eighty-four dollars. And that was just taking a shot early in the day and that was three K, so this was, I mean, huge for me.
So would you, uh, would you mind running us through the rush of emotions when you realized you clicked into the wrong tournament?
Uh, first of all, it was like, oh my fucking god, how can I be so? Such an idiot, but then like after, I, I don't know, when we starting to get closer to uh, the end of the late rank, I had like this feeling i- in my stomach that, okay, I, I think it's, it's gonna end well.
Alright, you got your sea legs, you got your sea legs about you, you got your confidence sorted. You had more than fourteen big blinds.
Alright, let's go, let's see how you.
Okay, ah, here we go, this is how you do it, okay, makes sense now.
Good start, I guess you bet small, yeah. A little call.
What is he calling with? He's got ten big blinds, what does he call it with? That's not beating you.
Diamonds, Jack ten or a spade.
Maybe, maybe.
So yeah, oh, what kind of size would you like here? I think I could go six?
I think this is fine, I think it's, I think it's splitting hairs when it's half your stack either way, pretty much.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the guy's only got nine big blinds left, right?
Yeah, I think betting is the takeaway. Uh, I, yeah, this is, this should be a fold.
Yeah, it should be a fold, right? We open early position, like if it's like buttons, small blind, it's different, right?
It's a call, it's a call if it's button, small blind.
But EP like that, yeah, probably more of a fold, yeah.
Should be a defend, I think.
Yeah. You miss.
Kinda just let it go multi-way. Uh, open, alright, this is a, uh, this is a, this is not a fun spot right here, I think it's a call.
The bottom, exactly the bottom, like sixes might be mixing here, sevens always a go.
Yeah, I agree, this is just a hard part of the range to play for this reason, like you just lose here a lot, but I mean, when you're good, you're good.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice little. Think of it this way, what pairs are you opening from under the gun?
Yeah, um, I think fives.
So sorry, what, how many bigs do we come into that hand with? Cause I think it's just an open shove.
Fifteen plus, it's probably okay, it's a, it's probably okay as an open.
I mean, I don't have a shoving range that, oh, it takes, uh, four deals even earlier, but.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look real quick.
At fourteen, Wizard has it for fourteen and it's a common shove from this position at fourteen.
They also have some ICM, so I wouldn't shove.
This is fifteen point five instead of fourteen, so it's, it's close though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good, honestly, it's a good candidate, I got fifteen, I got fifteen from middle position here, it's jamming thirty-five percent of the time, so.
Is this, um, Chippy V?
Yeah, Chippy V.
It's, it's registration period still.
I think, I think, um, the poker coaching GTO charts have this as a rate, min raise, not a shove.
It mixes, for sure.
So I was, I was looking at the early position charts just this morning.
I'll put this way, min raising is for sure not a fold.
Not, not bad, yeah, for sure. Uh, uh, this is probably okay, I think you could play this aggressively too, I think you could probably. I don't know, do you jam this ever? What is this, twenty-five effective?
Yeah, I wanna jam this a hundred percent.
I mix, uh, on the button, mixing both, but maybe it's just a shove.
So very, very, very high frequency shove, um, yeah, basically tens through sevens, you're typically playing this part of the range aggressively. In this or, in this spot, but, um, if you move down or up a little bit.
Yeah, one thing you wanna like, kind of like have in mind. This, on this kind of arrangement, when it's like out of position versus in position like this here. The king is really bad for us because we don't ever have a king here, we don't ever have kings. So this is like as bad as it gets for this kind of board, do we get to bet here without the heart? It's bad texture, bad.
And if we are.
I would, uh.
I want a third pot strictly.
I'm not still bad, I don't know if it's good.
I kinda like realizing equity here and I think GTO Wizard would probably agree, this seems just like a good check, check spot for me, I don't know though.
Hmm, okay, so we get punished as well.
Yeah, you can just kinda, you can kinda get out of the way.
I think with two overcards to the eight, it's gonna wanna stab the flop and then give up. And with two undercards to the eight, it's going to wanna check and try and realize equity against the hand that's gonna flop a worse pair more often.
Let's see.
Yeah, we don't really bet with our low pairs unless it's like really low. Like the worst ones, if you do, if you're in there with deuces or trees, you could bet because you don't have equity, but. Sevens and six and probably, we can guess eights are probably more of a check and then. If we look at sevens, usually the one I wanna bet is the one with the heart, you see this?
Yeah, the sliver starts coming in with the heart and in other formations, you'll bet even a little bit more, but still with the heart.
Yeah, so you need the heart here to bet.
Right, so takeaway here is jam it pre and if you make it here, play passively. What happened?
We won, they showed down.
Whoa, he called, okay, okay, oh, whoa, whoa, this is, this is definitely a bit spicy, um. He, like even his bluffs here, you're, you're, you're like flipping with at best, like his queen tens of the world. Um, in actuality, you're blocking some of his worst bluffs, which I imagine would probably contain an eight, so. Yeah, I, uh, I would definitely not be calling here.
I wouldn't either, but yet he makes the calling, it's good, interesting, why do you call here, Traddad?
Uh, I don't remember this specific hand, if I had some kind of like stats or on him or if I'd seen him do something crazy before. But I feel, I felt like when I saw the hand right now, like, okay, I'm gonna fold this. Uh, I guess why I bet from the, on the flop is. At least on lower stakes, this is not low stake, I know that, but on lower stakes. I feel like people give up a lot on the flop when out of position, especially from later positions. So like a small bet can, a lot of times just win the pot immediately, um, why I.
I think it's, I think it's pretty good, honestly, like, uh, the lower stakes you go, the more blind aggression is successful. I, I definitely agree with that, that's why I like the whole three bet, c-bet one hundred percent small kinda situation works a lot.
Yeah, but this does not look good.
Very savage hand to start with, honestly, I don't find enough calls there, I never call, we don't even have.
I, I think, uh, I think you just lose this spot usually, I think it, it, it works out, like, you know, but, um. I would definitely not be continuing there.
Yeah, you have to have a serious rhythm or opponent to call here, but, I don't know.
See what he shows.
Oh, that's totally sick.
Yeah, it was pretty. So, this spot right here is kind of interesting, I think.
I'd fold here.
Uh, I think we're a little too, we're like one or two positions too early, I would fold here, I think.
Yes, a fold.
Now, if we were on the button though, I think it's closer to a call.
You don't want that ninety-one big blind stacked, wake up with a hand.
Uh, four people behind you and it's already a close spot, so.
I think it's called too wide in these kind of spots. Uh, you get kind of messed up when playing bounty.
Mm-hmm, oh, well, yeah, the, the bounty aspect of it also makes it kind of tough.
This is a.
This is not about it, yeah.
This is not.
No, he was just speaking generally, he's speaking generally.
And a bounty, yeah, this should be a call.
So this might like at ten big blinds, if it was ten, it's, it's not good, but I'm pretty sure at nine, it's kinda, oh. Says lever at nine, so like you're very close here, very, very close, but how do you play it? Like, do you call or do you ISO? If you ISO thirty, this guy wakes up, it's so sick.
I think, uh, call fold is how I would play this.
Yeah, cause he bet large enough that it shouldn't get somebody just popping in just because they wanna see a flop.
Probably just all three of them, right? Yeah, I, I think this is a.
Yeah.
I would say this is a.
I'm comfortable with it. And, and even if, uh, even if it's a theory call, I think you find that people are missing like their light jams and stuff like these, so you can.
Right.
Call off even a little tighter than theory.
Right, so yeah, yeah, to what Tim's saying is, it only becomes a six-six full call if they're jamming at the frequency a solver is. And even in a three hundred dollar tournament, um, some players are not gonna be finding all of that, which is gonna make the call even worse.
Like, I find that that player's supposed to have hands like ten-nine suited or stuff like that, um, like pretty standard, but, uh, people just often don't show up those hands.
Oh, when they do that, it's like, oh my god.
I fold. Uh, this is a pretty uncomfortable situation.
I, I'd rather have nine-eight suited here.
I think you have the price is the problem to call like almost.
I, I think in nine-eight suited here is no, no good at all because you block both button with that ten and then nine.
Hmm, would you prefer nine-eight suited or ace-ten offsuit to continue here?
I prefer nine-eight suited.
I think I would prefer nine-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the ace-ten can run you, you're, you're running into ace-king, ace-queen. Um, maybe ace-jack depending how, how aggressive he is.
Are you guys really defending nine-eight suited here? Cause I'm not.
Definitely.
What, with this, with this, with the sizing, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's just a function that he, he, he three-bet super small.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it has like the direct odds, um, just see a flop. But, um, this one has pretty bad reverse supply odds.
Yeah, so it's a difference between ICM and Chippy V, you know?
And then ace-ten here would be a fold, but that's again, it's a regular size, this is shenanigans.
It is shenanigans, like it's kinda, it's kinda roping you, it's roping you in for a bad time is what it's doing.
And.
It's smelling like pocket kings.
Some players always, some players always have kings when they do that, I pretty much always have king-jack off when I do that, so you gotta figure out who they're playing.
Yeah.
Hmm, you know, yeah.
I guess never do it.
It's a good fold, um, this is kind of a trouble spot, I think, like, I don't think you have enough chips to. I was gonna say, like, you don't have enough chips to flat here and verse EP, like, under the gun there, I don't know if it becomes a good jam, I think it's just a fold, probably.
I thought so as well, feels like a fold, right? Because when you have a jack and a ten, like you block the worst combos in your opponent's range. He doesn't have like a stand or, uh, you know.
It just feels bad, man, like.
Right, he probably has more like eight eggs or king eggs when he have a jack and a ten in our hand, so.
It's like, uh, okay.
Looking at the solver on this one, when you, uh, that's playing against a fourteen big blind open from under the gun, which is a pretty nutty range. Uh, we don't have the solve for this, but if you are playing against their forty big blind open range, they have more open, they have more raised folds against you than the solver's expecting here from a fourteen big blind stack.
Yeah, but.
And you know, that's fair, Tim, that honestly, that's fair, I just don't know if that is gonna shift the decision tree towards like a slam.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, I think it's still probably.
The bottom of the range, right?
Yeah.
Where it's like, if it is, it's your easy jam.
Actually, may I still find a call here, cause I'm biased with Jack ten suited.
Oh, yeah. Uh, okay.
Oh, look at this, look at this, he has ten-eight.
This is, this is gifts.
Ten-eight, you're like, oh my god, the sweat you had here, my friend. And just.
Hey, you thought it was over, you thought it was over.
He thought he had you.
I thought it was over.
Again, shenanigans. Often, as bad as it gets, right? So we still.
I think, uh, is this king-six? I think this king-six is a bit wide now.
No, 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 it's not, well, it might be, but I mean.
Seventeen from the, seventeen from the low jack?
Is this a low?
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's a pop, and I think, uh, it being the stone bottom of open range, even though you wanna call a lot of good three-bits, you can still just fold this.
Okay.
Uh, small error on the aggressive side.
This is never.
Never, never do.
Oh, Jesus, take your biases out of the analysis, it's a tight line.
Percent here, no, it's a limb, Jesus Christ.
Yeah, I think he's one position too early.
Yeah, one bit.
Yeah.
You know, when you're.
It's good that you're finding these, uh, low-suited kings, a lot of people don't find those, to be quite honest.
Yeah, oh my goodness.
What that is my three bits, man.
The guy, uh, again.
Welcome, welcome to High Stakes, George.
Yeah, they do that all up.
I think, uh, I kinda like folding.
We gotta go here.
You, you wanna go here, man? I think our, we're just, I, I like folding.
Big blinds, and these guys are up to no good, this guy.
It's a four-bet range, dude, it's a four-bet range.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna four-bet ace-queen.
I want to four-bet ace-queen, but he, he doesn't have what it takes to be all in, so he can't.
Yeah, ace-queen should be a shove.
Yeah.
I would take ace-queen, I think so too.
Ace-jack, yeah.
I don't mind this.
Should it for, for should I?
Oh, that's the thing I find weird.
It's high stack, so, uh, yeah, you're supposed to call off.
But see, you know, like in the higher games, there's all kinds of players, right?
Yeah, but it's also more bluffing, you need.
Uh. This is a fine hand to go on in, I like that.
Yeah, I think you, uh, I think you run it here.
Oh, we got scanned. These big blinds.
When you, when you say, uh, scanned.
Alright, we get punished.
Folded.
Do you go with a-six here, a-seven?
Absolutely not.
Not?
Um.
Not from the hijack, man, not from the hijack.
Check the charts, at seventeen, this might be a shove from that spot.
I just did, it's no shove yet, even at fourteen, it's not really a shove, but it is close.
So, what do you guys think we call it? This is.
Ace-nine.
I snap fold now.
Uh, ace-jack off, ace-nine, uh, ace-nine or ace-ten field.
Ah, six-ten off, folding.
I go with a-seven here, a-seven should, but it may be too wide.
Seventeen still.
I may call ace-ten off. I'm not, it's close.
And then we get pushed on by the small blind, I think, right? Yeah, one blind push. That.
Oh, it's, it's ace-five suited, that shoves there, not ace-four.
Ace-ten off is in there.
You see, it'll be a-seven suited, but I said.
Oh, nice, well said, well done, so yeah, probably around a-seven. Very good. Ace-nine suited, this guy's up to no good, we can't really hold here, oh, that's a tough spot actually. Cause I think, like, it's probably a fold against a lot of players.
I thought we would have been blind.
Uh, it's suited, so I would call.
Yeah.
Now, we opened in early position.
So this guy is like.
Oh, no, we opened early, I would fold, you need.
Oh my goodness, we scanned them.
Before, it's early position, I would fold here.
You'd fold here, guys.
Yeah.
Ten bigs.
I think I might find a call.
Eleven bigs, I mean.
Because, cause he's done this, he's been aggressive.
Yeah, late against late, but this is early against, uh, small blind, I think, difference, different spot. Yes, he can bluff, but, uh, doesn't mean that he does that against other game.
So yeah, that would be ace-nine suited, well, and mixing though, right, it's really close. And ace-jack off, with being said that. So yeah, so fine call. Three-six, oh, tough spot, yeah, I guess we go all in.
I would go for it.
I would fold, on this, is this a PKO?
No.
No, no, no.
Six big blind, you have a pair of sevens, Scott.
But you're against, you're against two, you're against two players.
Yeah.
So you're against four overcards.
I think I fold here.
No, doesn't need to be four overcards, what do you think this guy does with his three big blind and pocket deuce, he's in there.
Gonna have ace-five?
Yeah, no, 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 it's never like four over cards, so.
But once the first guy shoves it in, or the guy with six is gonna be, gonna be tighter. Like, the problem is, his range is gonna be better.
Uh.
Yeah, but still sevens for six big blinds always I go.
Why don't you, uh, HRC this?
We know what it's gonna say.
Do we? I don't know, I'm not like super stoked on like, uh, running sevens multi-way here.
I am, I am, against, in theory, this is just a call, you gotta give these people some tight ranges if you wanna find fold.
This is an easy call for me.
The, the opening range is loo- is, is loose, but the, the second guy, yeah, I mean, his range is gonna be, uh, reasonably constructed.
Yeah, no, I mean, start looking at hands worse than ours, does he have sexes? Definitely, all day.
He does, but he doesn't have deuces.
Does he have, you know, does he have a-six suited? He does in theory, a-five suited, a-four suited.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not the same situation.
It's close, probably, indeed.
Wow, this is close enough, I mean, it's a call. You can hold like fours, trees, deuce, fives are like zero EV.
I, I completely agree against one player, that, I, no question against one player, my question is against two.
No, this is cut-off calling.
Like, look at the cutoff range, right? He's not, he's not that tight.
Is this a cutoff, what does it say, cutoff jamming range or like?
This, this is under the open jam, cut off balls, and around the button.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's probably fine, I just, uh, I don't think it's so crystal clear as everyone's kind of saying here, I mean, I don't have charts. That represent a spot like this.
Yeah, but also, really, against that range, uh, look, looking against that range, do you really love sevens against that range?
Yeah.
You're beating.
No, 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 Scott, it's six big blinds, a pair of seven is always gonna be good enough.
Okay. I, I, what I like with this spot at least is like the players left to act, no one covers also, we're not really like putting our, uh, tournament lives.
Exactly, so it's like, for me, it's not too difficult. I like that, oh, it's king and king-ten, okay.
Well, that's something I was gonna say, say too, cause if they all have overcards, they could easily be sharing cards.
Yeah. That, that was absolute, I did think about that, that it was, that it could be three overcards to the blocker easily.
Yeah, I actually, um, my biggest mistake from a session the other day in H, in HRC was, um, an ICM spot where I folded sevens against two short sacks. And, um, and I was still supposed to call them off, and, uh, I was shocked, but, yeah, it's on my mind.
This sizing is not, not too good.
Yeah, five point five.
Something like that, I like more, I mean. But then yours.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna just get it in, it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, people, if people are using the micro three-bets in the pool a little more, I mean, it's not that.
Whoa.
Well, this here, like, we have an open jam, three big blinds.
Yeah, okay, but that's.
This guy.
Hey, uh, so for funsies, let's look at the same scenario you just looked at, but with five-six. But comparing, comparing for the seven X. So like, so like, look at five big blinds or something, I know it doesn't close the action.
You have to call from the big blind.
Here it does close the action, I mean, there's, there's action behind on the flop, but, uh, we are, we're gonna see a flop.
Right, so I mean, following the same logic that everyone was using on the sevens hand, is this one that different from clicking it in?
I love clicking it in, just calling.
What are you talking about, my friend?
Calling, calling three point eight-eight big blinds.
Five-six suited, it's, it's not two point.
Oh, you know, I, well, I don't hate it, the issue is like, you're obviously behind, cause like you have, you know, a very, a very bad hand.
Yeah, and, and we're not deep enough to.
We're not deep enough, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Hold the shenanigans with sixty bigs behind, then I'm actually thinking about calling here, but with only fifteen bigs behind, it's like, I need to hit. And then I need to get in, and congratulations, I win fifteen bigs when I do, like, eh.
Eighteen bigs when you do.
I mean, this is a snap fold.
Yeah.
I mean, I win fifteen more bigs, you know, I might be able to, I can have an action to get fifteen behind.
Yeah, yeah, it's such a fold.
Yeah, but you give him sixty bigs, I, I think you might call there.
Hey, go back.
So, guys, the, the opening, uh, like two point three, I think, when we're playing at twenty-five, yeah, we can open to two, two point one, right?
Yeah, yeah, George, that's fine.
Uh, I think we should see that a lot.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that too.
The store? That's a jack-high board, and a five and a douche, meaning.
Yeah, I think this is a, I'm gonna hijack, twenty bigs.
I mean, jack-high dry, it's just gonna be a pretty much range that's small.
Yeah, I need to card, we must bet here.
I mean, it's disconnected, it's jack-high.
Yeah, so you should probably.
It's gonna be.
Fold. A little bit spicy. That's small, no.
You get bets large here, I think, maybe, no, I mean, he's only got fifteen behind.
It's a curve board, we don't.
And, and it's paired, and it's paired, yeah.
Well, bet large for stacks, so ma- maybe hip hop bet is tops.
I don't think you check back ever with.
Yeah, no, we don't, no, yeah, we don't check back.
This is a C, no.
Checking back is definitely not. Checking back is definitely not what you're doing here. Hundred percent.
Better face, yeah, it's unmeasurable.
Oh, yay. I like poker.
Yeah.
The way it should be, yeah, laying this kind of board here from, in this kind of arrangement, okay, you're gonna be polarized, you're gonna check it up, and you're gonna bet big a lot. And you're gonna have some bets smalls, but for me here with this pocket five, I, I don't find enough checks. You, you like checking her, Gavin?
With pocket fives out of position, thirty big blinds, EP, what's it like, MP, MP? I do, I do quite a bit of checking here.
Yeah, I check here.
Although I have, I've shifted my strategy to betting a bit more, to be honest. I've been exploring the out of position betting quite a bit more lately.
On king logo, I think we do get to range bet here for flush draw.
So the one thing I know is, okay, it's, it's got a flush draw, it's got a flush draw, which is gonna make us bet smaller. Um, high, low, low, I think is gonna be like low frequency bet, small, high frequency check. So.
Yeah, lots of betting.
So sixty percent, and then like, you got forty percent bets, but it is primarily a small bet.
Yeah.
Pretty sure if you made it rainbow, you would, uh, have some more larger betting here.
Oh, you, you think?
I think, yeah, I do.
I thought it would be more higher frequency, but more small betting.
All right.
You see, you see the three point seven?
Yeah, you're right.
Sizing up.
Why, why, why does the, why does the rainbow make it a bigger bet? I would think it'd be the opposite, the, if this is a more coordinated board, this is a more dynamic board, therefore we bet bigger.
Um, I think it's a, uh.
Out of position, it's kind of the other way around.
I think the way it works, Scott, is it's a function of like the equity, um, the range equity, so like, if you looked at both ranges in Pyo, when there's a flush draw available, the equities run closer, and when equities run closer, that's when you see bet sizes get smaller.
Okay.
Like, it's just a matter of leveraging that big equity, um, disparity. Disparity.
So. Because he's in position, and there's flush draws then.
Yeah, but here we also have, uh, a lot of nut advantage, because he lacks the sets that we have. Where we have pocket fives and he has, and pocket kings, he doesn't have, uh, pocket fives or pocket twos here.
Hmm.
There's certain pocket fives or pocket twos.
So he should be going in on this right there. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent, yeah, this is, this is fine, I mean, this is effectively all in, you're just leaving three point seven big blinds of value behind, is all you're doing.
Oh. Facing this, this is a call. Or a four bet jam.
Uh, ugh.
Oh. Yeah, it's, uh, okay.
Wait, was the small blind in the middle there?
Nah, small blind folded.
Oh, yeah, just put all the chips in, yeah, that's fine. I thought there was twenty-seven big blinds of action behind, and I was kind of nervous about, uh, jamming threes there.
Yeah, trees are actually like open shoving, pre-flop, so it should be just going on in here.
For twenty-five effective, wow.
Yeah.
Tell you what, this GTO stuff, man, it's a hell of a thing.
No, but the.
Yeah, this is.
The small blind has twenty-five.
So, yeah, yeah.
So you have to.
You would still jam, pretty sure.
We can look at twenty-five. No, it's, uh.
No, you just raise.
Twenty-five.
So it's close.
Go to twenty, twenty.
Close position.
Take the average.
I see, this would be a fold against a three bet at twenty-five.
Yeah, that's why I'm, uh, I did this, uh.
Yeah, he has only, uh.
If it was thirty, I mean, not thirty-five, it's, uh.
Louis, uh, thinking about all the mistakes I've made with pocket threes.
We, we four bet, Louis doesn't think about that, only you think about that, um.
He's thinking, he's thinking about, oh, the sins I've committed with pocket threes.
Uh, no, you're the only one, you're the only one thinking about Louis there. Um, we four bet jammed this.
Oh, wait, remember his statement from his PR agent?
Yeah, I know, hey, the PR agent's up, it's, he's away right now, we're, we're doing good.
We've just, yeah, we've got enough. Four bet jammed. What'd you say about he calling ten-nine there?
Oh, his play is, uh.
He's three bet ten-nine.
Quite marginal, but.
I think the three betting is fine, it's a three that fold, though.
That's sure.
No, I mean, it's not, it's not like optimal, but I think it's fine to exit.
While calling the jam here with nine, ten suited, you're like, hmm.
That's torching.
So, yeah, it's, uh, more, uh, very splashy play, both the three bet and calling the jam.
You know, I would love to know who is at this table with you, I don't know if there's a way you can put the names here. But I would absolutely.
I just looked it up on a thirty big blind sim, and, uh, it shows up on, at thirty as a three bet.
He was seventeen now, right?
Yeah, he was twenty big blind.
Oh, you were also twenty-five.
Probably twenty-five, probably twenty-five. He starts the hand with twenty-three, seven, so. But I'm just saying, like, as a point of comparison, if he wants a not all inside, like Wizard doesn't give a not all inside at twenty-five, but I think this hand could show up in one if you built one out.
At thirty, seventy-five, uh, you can, uh, four bet force or something.
No, not fours, I'm talking about big blind play.
No, 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 no.
So what, wait, wait, what happened here? This is a donk from an under the gun open or an EP open?
Big blind down. I was gonna question with, with the stacks, should this even be an open?
Well, that's, that's where I was too mentally.
I'm not opening it.
No, I mean.
Like.
You guys are a bunch of nits, it's okay.
No, not.
It's rough against these rejam stacks, like Button has twenty-one bigs, they're just gonna jam whatever, you know, jam pocket sevens on us.
Yeah, there, there's a twenty-three, twenty-two big, twenty-four big, twenty-one, thirteen.
Cast under the gun.
Yeah, but under the gun, you're protected by how, how frequent you have big hands.
Ashwin, you here?
I don't think it's bad, to be honest, opening this, but I, I don't, I don't find it enough, to be honest.
For the record, I fold this.
For the record, uh-oh.
Jesus, oh, if, if Ashwin folds, I mean, I'm getting lonely.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's why I said, uh-oh.
All right.
What are we doing here?
The dice sport, it doesn't count, I mean.
Did you say you're playing, Ja, Yas?
I know, that's my house.
I didn't hear that. Uh, okay, so I, I don't mind it, honestly, but what I do mind is when a guy leads, like.
Yeah, but this is close to a board that he should be leading.
Doesn't make it right, Joey.
I wanna click it.
No, if, if he saw like one video on leading, he could say, oh, this looks like one of the boards I'm supposed to lead.
Yeah, well, and he's making a mistake here.
Yeah.
Doesn't, never shows up with pocket nines here, shove it in his face.
I don't know.
Or night and shove it. I'm always shoving it here, we got, we got overcard, he's got overcards that'll call.
I like, I wanted to, when he has like a seven X or a four X or a five X, and then he doesn't get there on the turn, and then we bet him off.
I'm kind of on team click it myself.
Oh, my goodness.
Right, cause then, now what do we, like, what is, like, this is, this is gross.
No, no.
Ace is better for us than it is for him, I think it's all right.
Yeah, but you're turning it.
But we're not, then our, our range is okay with it, but our hand is not.
Yeah.
No, our hand's not great, but I, I kind of like betting small to check back the river kind of situation.
I agree.
Well, we were behind all along.
Oh, my god.
But you get to chop, so it's, so it's good.
We save the nine, uh.
It's a top. It's a top, yeah, there was a pair and a queen, or an ace, I mean, I mean. It's a top, 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 top.
Wait.
It is straight.
Deuces got a wheel. It rolled out with a four liner.
Yeah, that, that, I came out too fast, I didn't see where the board was, I just saw, I saw the ten.
Just a scam.
Just call.
Yeah, we, uh, we lost with the flop, so, sorry. Runner, runner.
Pocket deuce never lose.
Pocket, uh, pocket tens got scanned.
We have like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent equity on that flop.
Is this a rip? No.
You got forty, but you could, uh, you could free bet this, or you could probably flat this, I kind of like free betting it, I think.
I don't know, if I'm not, if I'm not jamming, I kind of prefer calling over three betting, cause, you know.
Me too.
Getting four bets off. Are, are we three betting tens here?
Yep.
Tens is more like the hand I want to three bet for value, yes. Maybe jacks.
We have to three bet tens, because otherwise how can we lose to a four liner with them?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah, great logic, that's a great point, great point there.
Okay, so. This is probably.
By the way.
All right, over cards.
I don't think calling here is a mistake at all, I don't think it's.
I think. It's a theory call, it's a theory call for sure.
But after the jack rolls off, we're against early position.
This is like, uh, this is like I'm calling one street of aggression and shutting down when another overcard comes.
Yep. So you. And this is not, and this is not the right turn for us to get sticky, cause, you know, like, name hands that he opens, that he bets half pot there, like, he's betting stuff like king, jack, he's betting stuff like maybe ace, jack.
So, are you guys betting here?
No, no.
Now. Checking.
We also block the hands that we want him to have, ones that don't have interaction with the five, four, or the queen, jack.
Yeah.
So we went with the bet?
It has interaction, it's seven.
We need to, we need to stop taking aggressive action with the middle of our range.
Yeah, this is, see, this is, this is why this is a mistake right here, like, you're not realizing your equity, you're just getting blown off by his draws and his better hands. Like, you could check this, maybe hit an eight, maybe he gives up with his king ten. Whereas like, if he has king ten of diamonds here or something like that, like, he's just gonna be blasting you off his equity, off your equity right here.
That's bad. I don't, I don't like that turn, Ben.
Check her.
Nope.
This is a bit spicy of an open, is it not?
It is.
Yeah, I want, I want these nine off.
Yeah.
Honestly, ace nine off is even kind of close, I mean, you're seven-handed, so you could squeeze ace nine in there?
What do you mean?
I'm assuming we gotta be getting close to the money bubble of some sort, right? Like, everyone seems kind of short, like, how many chips? How many chips does everyone have? I think the starting stack is ten K.
No, it's the three hundred. Oh, yeah, it's ten K, we got six.
I think it's ten K. So six starting stacks and it's fifteen big blinds, you gotta assume this is getting close to like the money bubble, I don't think we're quite there yet.
I think he max late dredge as well, we started with.
Yeah, yep. I think you're right, so like, you have to assume we're getting somewhat close, and like, hands like this are gonna start phasing out of our EP opening range pretty quick.
I think I like a bet here. Even though.
You could, honestly, you could check or bet this, you just have the board so blocked.
What, what does the, the, the range wants?
Well, ace, ace. We, we only have.
Quarter pot.
We only have sixteen big blinds behind, so we can't afford to check one street.
We can, but it's almost shadier to check than to bet, like, I'm just betting basically my range twenty-five percent hot.
Get, getting bluffed here?
Betting a lot, one or, or something small.
Yeah, yeah, my standard size is twenty-five percent.
Checking back here is a disaster.
Yeah.
Man, now you gotta, you gotta look at theory to actually say that, like, ace, when you're blocking the board like this, it's gonna protect your checking range with these nut, nut, nut combos sometimes. You can't say it's a disaster.
Yeah, when the, when the board offers the double flush draw.
Yeah, turn, turn, you have to bet.
Value from the, from the flush draws.
Yeah.
Probably.
So, hang on.
I go with one big line on this spot.
So, so, let's pretend we had ace nine, and the board is ace nine.
Yep, that's reasonable.
Big blind.
He says nine with a flush draw.
Range bet, one big line. I'll leave for a week.
You're, you're pretty shallow.
He started twenty effective.
Yeah, that's what I thought, you need to bet here, uh.
Yeah, it's just betting, it's just a range bet. Just a range bet.
And that's the thing, and then we, we have to bet big on the river, like, I think we bet tiny on the flop, we get a little bit of value from a single diamond type hand, from king, queen type hand.
Polarized turn, I think, but that's short, I'm not sure.
No, you wanna keep.
I like seeing the small bet on that trip, Kings, that's good to see.
Flopping the full house, you wanna keep both flush draws in, so you price them in, you only bet like twenty-five, thirty percent on that turn.
Yeah, we would bet, what your boss wanna do, I think the, uh, heuristic is rain, when you bet just one big line, like ten percent on flop, you polarize your turns.
Yeah, to some degree, it's still not huge, cause the chef's stacks are short, but yeah, polarized size, there is like fifty to sixty percent pot.
Is this a good spot? To click it, or just in all them?
Jam.
Uh, do you ever just call here?
You could just call here.
No, I think if you're calling, you're, with something, you're calling with aces, not with kings, kings really doesn't wanna let ace, jack, or, or some trash see a flop.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, it'd be interesting to kind of look, I, I just don't know the answer. I know, like, it's aces.
Aces, I think is a very reasonable call, very reasonable call. Price didn't call here a lot.
So let's see, I'm gonna check, twenty-five, uh, versus three bet, what are we like, EP two versus low jack or something?
Uh, hijack.
Hijack.
EP two hijack. Yeah, so like aces, like everyone's kind of guessing is a pretty heavy call, kings is not really that, now if we start going a little bit shorter. Yeah, just flattening kings, you don't wanna do that. You just wanna kind of put it in.
This is bluffs, like, practically all have an ace in them, so it's kind of cool to, uh, to fold out thirty percent of equity.
Yep.
What's the?
Yeah, that's. Uh, flat?
You sure?
I mean, if you three bet this hand and you get four bet on, you've almost priced yourself in to call like with crap equity.
You have a shout here?
I think it's a more reasonable shove, but I don't wanna do. I think the fact that you don't wanna three bet and then have to face a four bet.
But it's close.
Oh, okay.
Serving or calling, uh, serving the queen, Jack, okay.
But your, your idea can't be terrible, Louis, because the queen, jack does it.
You wanna keep in his, in this position, you want, you wanna keep him in the hand with king ten, king nine.
Yeah, I think, uh.
I don't like this, I don't like this call.
So I think we, if we had like spades, hearts, clubs, we could.
Yeah.
Possibly call, it would, would, you out of line, but I think diamonds here is a bit wider than call.
Yeah, I agree, a hundred percent, actually.
With the fact that it's the pair tens too, cause like, all of his hands are ace high or pairs, or have a ten in them, basically.
Yeah, you're just.
That, the monster, he's just floating and learn again, and then he puts him in the box.
I mean, his seven is kind of good for his dock, right?
What are you doing here, Pat, that?
Uh. We, I don't know.
Well, he saw, he looked at the guy's profile, saw he had three point five million in winnings, and was like, I can bluff this guy.
Well. Also. Before the solvers, that was a very standard play. Float and then bet whenever they check.
Yep.
Still, uh.
I asked, I mean, I think something of the motion is kind of.
Hey, can you guys let Trad that talk, please? You can say something, they're killing.
Uh, now, I, I've, uh, my thinking is like, the seven is a lot much, a lot better card for us. And, uh, like, uh, we block him from having like, uh, some kind of straight draw, so either he has a ten, if he has a good hand, or he has something, he will just fold.
Hmm. We might have some seven X, like, we're gonna have some eight, nine sometimes, so like. I mean, I can get by, I can get behind that someone.
Line's got eight, seven as range, seven, eight, six, seven, stuff like that, that he's got, like, I don't think he should be docking flop honestly much, but he's gonna have, the seven's gonna help his bluffs, I would think.
Ken, this wasn't a dunk flop. That, he was under the gun and opened.
Oh, I thought he was. I think, yeah, okay.
Uh, but, uh, 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 I ask you guys, uh, would you from under the gun bet on that flop?
Uh, but, uh, I ask you guys, uh, would you from under the gun bet on that flop?
That's small, yeah, that's small for sure.
Well, we're gonna look at the solution, actually. Let's see the under the gun strategy. Under the gun on this.
I don't think I would bet that flop, right? He's supposed to check that.
So I think you can bet it actually, so it's a paired board. It's, the cards pair, that's kind of like in both ranges, so I wouldn't be surprised to see like some larger betting here. Like a little bit.
It's fifty-fifty on.
Right.
He's betting range on this.
Close.
Yeah, he should be betting, because like that ten, it's gonna be hard to defend here, like, um, it's a six, ten, ten board.
Yes, all, all the over pairs and he has trips in it. I fold flop now that I know where the gun opened.
Yeah, he has, he has full frequency for his offsuit combos of tens here, so.
Interesting, yes. Since he bet so much on the flop. You know? Defending here is not too, not too out of line, it's mostly a call. Although like it's clear that with the backdoor flush, it's an easy call, whereas this one is just like, eh. Getting edgy.
Right, and, uh, I think if villain doesn't find the range bet, it becomes a bit worse, right?
Very, very close, right?
Yeah.
Seven of spades with the backdoor flush. And then he checks, right? So he goes with the chip. And what are we supposed to do with the hand like king, jack? Oh, look at this.
Look at all that betting. Oh, yes.
Yeah. So I feel like it's, it's just like going like three into eleven, so this is a, a small bet. This is never a big bet. But the bigger it goes with this kinda hand is alpha, whereas here you go a little larger. So it's a thing, right? The solver says it's not too crazy. But now you're in the pickle after it falls that.
Uh, yeah, this is, um, this is like, feels really bad, man, situation right here.
Can you do but rep it? Give up?
There is a, there is a check, but.
The flush completes, the board pairs. You're gonna be very polarized here.
Oh my goodness, you're supposed to, you're in a shop here.
Yeah, nothing.
Oh, shoot me.
Somebody just shove everything.
Louis, I think.
And diamonds, diamonds now would be the best, better than clubs, hearts and spades, I guess, cause we're not blocking any of his backdoor floats.
Well, no, not better than spades, cause spades got there. We'd really like.
Alright, right, right, yeah.
We would love to have a spade in our hands.
Better than clubs and hearts, so, yeah.
Isn't this guy's life miserable with pocket?
Hold on for a second, um, clubs and hearts don't float the turn, when we bet the turn.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Come on, Jim.
I think I've even spades. I think Spencer is a, is a cookie, right? We want to recall this one off.
Cause you have to look this up with eights, I imagine he does, right?
I think you could get, I think he, he, maybe for GTO, he's supposed to call, but I think you could get a fold from him.
I'm pretty sure he folds with eights. Oh, he's mixing.
No, solver mixes. I think this, I think you can get a fold from it.
He's solid when he flush with it.
Yeah, it's such. Yeah, it's such a great, it's such a great card, though, because it. Everything that you had came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you floated the flop with a six, you got there with a full house. If you started with a ten, you got there with a full house. If you floated spades, you got there.
Yeah, exactly. It's everything.
Yeah, and if, if he has a tie, he's like, shit, am I chopping?
I think this is probably funny.
How is it we're going to two now? And not two point three pre-flop? Anyways.
Um.
Can we check here?
Check flop a lot, but ten might find some bets, but, uh, I would check.
I, I think I would check too.
I'd check here.
When, when you're in, when you're in the middle in three-way, it's usually better to just check.
I didn't even see it was three-way, I thought we were heads up, so yeah, I'm definitely checking.
Uh, cause, uh.
Or maybe it might, do we ever blast? Like, is it a check or just jam flop?
You can't jam.
On your equity? We only got fifteen bigs.
And it's EP versus EP ladder, if I'm not mistaken, what exactly.
I mean, a jam might not be horrible, huh? Anybody else doing that?
What value hands are you, like the problem is if you're jamming this block, what value hands?
Louis calls this a value hand.
It's not a polarized, it's not a polarized range, it's a, it's like middle of the ring stuff, it goes, yeah, pretty denial, but I don't think, how many, how many bigs are we?
Four, we have fourteen behind.
From UCG plus one?
Yeah, I don't know what we started to him with, I guess seventeen, sixteen.
I think it's close.
He's squeezing seven.
Now I would mostly check, but I wouldn't be surprised if you get to get out of line. And just run your equity.
Very heavy check with the hand like, and nine, although there's a sliver, right? We see here.
Yeah, if you're awkward to bet, this is one of the hands that will bet.
Yeah.
It does go big, but not all in.
But I still like your strategy of like checking just about everything.
Yeah.
Oh, man, I just looked at the final table of this tournament and like some of the, like the final two tables, there were some sickos left in this tournament.
Uh.
I think we're about to see hero just run like God, so I'm excited about that, I think.
Like, some really good players left.
Who's there?
The blocks that you get at this point are gonna match the value hands that you have. So when you have hands like ace, king, and ace, jack. You're going to find hands like jack ten and king ten that are going to bluff the same level as your value here.
So if you are to bet here. What, what, like, what we see from the DTO multi ways that you're, you're using the bigger side when you bet with this kind of combo. Or you should probably size up to four here when you bet.
Out of possession, huh? You don't get faults, uh, with small. And then what you put those chips in your numbers?
Yeah, I think we should check the nine note.
There is.
Yeah.
Want to marginal mayhem?
I'm checking the line. That call, they blasted. Hard to play with checking.
No, I'm not folding.
No way.
Make it nine of diamonds.
Yeah, nine of diamonds. Yeah, double flush draw board too, right? So. We have so many bluffs here that we get to check this.
Oh, it says to go all in.
Okay.
No, the purple is go all in, isn't it, Louis?
Yeah, yeah, but like this.
It's a sliver. It's all sliver going all in.
What, I'm confused, was the rest of the, oh, are those the equities? No.
The, the rest of it checks on the floor.
Yeah.
This is a spot where you should bet big.
Yeah, that's, that's a bet.
Oh, that's.
Okay.
Uh, like. Calling here.
Oh, yeah, still.
There in the middle, you don't, you don't, like, you have less of a raising range.
I would beat some of the stupid, maybe.
This is a call. Or a three bet.
I'd do anything.
Always a three bet, right?
I would, I would say you always three bet this.
How about with the nine big blind stacked? We wanna trap? It's just a hand we could trap with?
Right, this guy has some calls and you don't wanna let him realize equity for free.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, cause he's two undercard type hands, still have forty percent equity, it's.
Maybe if the small light was on the epic, then it's more.
Also, you could be playing for a big pot here, it's a jam, so you don't wanna plow that opportunity either.
Okay.
And close call. I like this dunk, this is very good, the four times. Uh, I like that.
So why does the, uh, why do you think the four shifts equity enough to make a dunk there?
Well, because it drains that thing here, and he's not range betting, so.
It, it went check, check, it went check, check on the flop too.
Yeah.
Oh, so it wasn't a dunk, it's just a lead, okay, I see now.
Yeah.
He just led the turn.
I think it's called a probe bet now.
Yep, I think you're right. I think it is what you would call it, a probe.
And then a big bet on the nine X, I think that's also pretty good, although.
Right, which, which turns it into an anal probe bet.
Anal probe.
On the nine, yeah.
Problem here is, when he checks the flop, it's gonna be nine X hands that he's gonna check this, so.
Sure. The river nine, it's not great, right?
Yeah, but I like the emotion, like.
Yeah, I like to.
Because.
Yeah, that's alright.
You gotta continue with.
Don't block his faults.
It's kind of the right.
And you're not gonna win with five, six, if you're not bet.
Yeah.
Exactly, we're at the bottom of our range and we kind of, we picked up equity on the turn and we break river, so it qualifies pretty good.
Hmm, what, uh, what part of the range do you think you actually give up with there? Because, you know, just because we have a low card doesn't mean we're betting that entire range, yeah? It's gonna give up with something.
Everything that didn't pick up equity on the four turn.
But, but they didn't bet.
Exactly. We give up with them. Um, is this a?
So you're saying, oh, so you're saying the entire range that you bet the turn with, you're betting on the river too?
Yeah. Everything that pick up equity on the turn and that break the river, that is the bottom of the range, yeah.
Hmm, maybe.
Yeah, before, and you pick up equity, then you have two low cards, otherwise you can't.
I think it's a nice hand to look at.
Yeah, kinda. I just, um, I, I feel like I personally, only reason I'm drawing emphasis on it is I feel like I personally make mistakes on that note sometimes. And, uh. You know? Cause I, I'm, I'm with you, Louis. I, I do, I basically barrel a hundred percent of my range there, and I just don't know if it's the right answer, always.
Yeah, good. Poker hard.
Oh, no.
During the ICM yet?
Yeah, we kinda discussed that earlier. I think there's definitely ICM. I wouldn't be surprised if he's in the money already.
If not really close.
If not really close, yeah. Cause he had like fifteen big blinds and he had six starting stacks, so you can assume that's getting pretty close, I would think. So this is the turn, right?
And this is the darn, so look at the size, it's overbet.
So lots of good betting here, which is, which makes sense to me.
Yeah, but it's an overbet.
Yeah, pretty big, huh?
Pretty big. So hand like five, six off is the way. A lot. But it's.
So this is the turn.
Or two X pot.
Yeah, so that's gonna make the river kind of weird, right? Cause it's gonna jam a lot of that stuff now, just because it's gonna fit that sizing. So. If you don't take that sizing, I would be more curious about like, how that's gonna affect the range.
Yeah, but the rest of the sin is gonna be skewed, if we don't take that sizing, no. So say we did. Go for seven point four. And what does he do? He calls? And the nine of diamonds on the river.
Right.
Now what we'd be giving up? Say we go big on the turn, we give up.
Right. And so this is kinda, this is kinda where I'm at with this, cause it's like, I, I'm with you, I kind of just will barrel off here and I just don't, uh. It gives up sometimes, and I'm not sure like what's the driving mechanism for that is.
So clips, uh, with diamonds want to bet.
So. Alright, and say we went small on the turn, and then he calls. And then it's the nine of diamonds on the river. And now we just never have a combo.
No, six, five off, so comparable.
Yeah, seven, five off, right, it's close. Yeah.
Close hand, I mean, yeah.
So like the play here is to blast turn and then you're naturally doing betting river. Although I like the motion.
Yeah, I also like margin, I don't think it's bad.
But it's not, not very good. Uh, is this a jam pre-flop? What are you guys doing here? Thirteen bigs.
No, not unless there's, if there's serious ICM pressure, then you start jamming like any two, but otherwise, no.
I kinda think maybe raise, fold it, I don't know.
It's mostly them.
I don't think we really raise, fold much against thirteen bigs.
If I see a raise, faults, uh.
Nice.
Eight big.
Um. So jack nine six. I think this is a range bet as well, what do you guys think?
We can check back to this combo.
It's a dangerous board, huh? Jack nine six, lot of draws.
So there's multiple straight draws and check, raisey combos available. I feel like you might have a few more checks on a texture like this.
I also think that.
And this particular hand, uh. Has some equity, wanna lose. If we get checked.
I would say it's a bit bored, normal.
But I need to.
Makes sense. But, uh, no checking almost, yeah?
No checking.
No checking.
No.
Four percent, that's almost none.
I don't like the call on the river. I don't like this line you took and then calling on the four break. I don't like it.
I don't either. He's just gonna own you with like some random pair there.
Yeah.
On that, on that texture. This is fine, yeah. Uh, okay. Probably. Probably bet small with this hand.
Yeah.
Very high frequency bet, pair board like this.
And we're also assuming that there's some ICM involved in these hands now, right?
Yes.
Oh.
Not sure how much, because it goes up and down with bubbling, we're not sure where we're at.
Wow, what is this? Did he just leave for like? One point five?
Did we, did, we just see that swap, right? Go back, Louis went too fast, I didn't see if he's.
No, we didn't see that.
Oh, boy.
Alright, Scotty is having a storm in this place.
Having.
Sorry about, sorry about that.
We know it's just your wife, Scotty. Uh, I think I would bet frequently here.
Hundred percent.
Back here, and then this is.
Hundred percent range.
Overbet here on this turn.
Hmm, so do you guys, uh, you think that's a range bet spot, the ten, ten, nine, two tone?
You don't think?
I just looked it up, it's a hundred percent.
I was guessing, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I.
Yeah. We had a ten, a ten, ten, six, two tone, that was a check back, or. Range bet.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a, it's a meaningfully EV difference for like, for this.
Yeah.
Deuce, the EV difference is, uh, is like point zero five bigs, it's, uh, just mandatory.
Man, I hate that.
Cause like the sucky thing about him overbetting that turn is he could have some bluffs that were behind, like he could have some stuff with straight draw wraps. And, um, we folded the winning hand.
We should size up here a little bit. Think this is more of a big bet, that you could go off butter.
I like big bet here for sure.
I agree.
Now I hate life.
Yeah. Half pot's a decent way to go.
Whatever you can tell, it's that small.
I am never calling with queens, and what about you guys?
I'm all in.
Nah.
I'm all.
I'd grab.
Yeah, shut down his, um, shut down his buffs, get him to fold out, take down the pot. Yeah, shut down his um, shut down his buffs, get him to fold out, take down the pot. Yeah, called off by Jax, it's good.
Fault, please.
No, whatever's going on.
Yeah.
We're value betting queens.
No, we blocked that. We blocked that queens.
Well, but cuz we expect to get called by worse.
You shouldn't have.
Are we calling on the flop with queens?
He three bet, see that, turn one, check, check, so.
I don't mind a small bet, yeah?
Yeah, it's just, it's a thin value, but you might get called by tens, Jax.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's torching, but I think it's worth like zero. I just think this is like not a winning part of the game tree for us. There we go.
Yeah, we should have gone all in here briefly.
I think we're quite late right now, not far away from.
Right.
What was the?
What are you saying, Bradan?
I, I say, I, I think we're quite late right now. Are we not far away from the final table? So I think it was just me being too cautious, not going all in with queens there.
Right.
Okay.
Which chance are you waiting for? Which chance are you waiting for if you're waiting for something better than queens?
I don't know.
And like also look at, you know, look at showdowns, like he's three betting, he was there with X4 suited. It's great to get X4 suited to fold. That's beautiful. He gave you six big blinds.
Of his life.
No um, no variance. That's a slam dunk.
Very, very thin jam here. But it's a thing. Ooh, what do you need? A five and a, man, runner, runner, backdoor perfect. This guy looks like he's not too happy.
Trying to bag that thirty thousand dollars and he gets that.
Not too happy. To say the least.
This is a good, that, it's good to bet the king queen against uh, an imposition caller. He has a lot of ace acts and uh, we wanna get him out of.
I think here, we're very polarized in our betting. Just guessing that I think we check a lot or bet big a lot and I wouldn't find any big bets with this hand.
I think uh, I think high, high, low is not gonna be as big of a betting as you think.
It is gonna find a bet with pocket sevens though.
No, it may be different. It may be different like hijack cut off, but I think it's gonna be more checking than you would suspect.
Ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we check a lot. Uh, we, like, we, we're using a little bit of that big size, but mixing on the sizes, you could go smaller.
I mean, what if?
But.
There's errors.
That more.
Pocket seven is more of a change.
Till aggression picks up the pot a lot, as we can see.
Oh, gotcha. We don't fold yet. Now, I guess we fold, yeah.
Jack ten, let's see a flop. This is gonna give me those chips. I think a big bet. What do you think about a big bet here? No, you can't. He's already got ten big blinds, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, if he shoves on you, what do you do?
I think that.
We fold here once.
Well, if you bet big, I think you almost have to call it all.
Uh, this hand is gonna mimic what we would do with pocket Jax and pocket tens here, and so it is gonna be a big bet.
What do you think, Louis? Your voice got kinda muddled in the fray there.
I don't think we bet the backdoor flush because if we bet any shove, we struggle. Whereas if we bet with clubs, it's easy. We bet fold, right?
What if we were deeper? What if we were deeper?
I ain't doing it.
Oh, man.
You're not gonna get me. You're not gonna get me.
I think, I think it's a bet, man. I think it's a big bet.
I don't know why.
One big why, he has no, if you're deeper. He has no tens, jacks, queens, king.
Tell you what, tell you what, Jack ten offsuit, sure. Jack ten offsuit. Jack ten.
Oh, okay. Louis, you wanna preserve, okay, you wanna preserve the heart back door. Okay, if you wanna pick the hearts as your check pack, that's fine, but me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nine. I think Jack ten, Jack ten is an appealing bet here.
I would rate it as a big blind.
It has no showdown value, it has overcards to the nine, it gets lots of dominating, it has to fold. It's a nice, it's a nice bet.
Hmm. So, am I making mistakes here is more the question?
We check back a lot and we only sign small when we bet. There's no big bets.
Ice Jack ten suited, not in a range. Did we shove it?
Jam.
Yeah, we should.
Well, he's looking, yeah, I mean, we're looking at a uh, very shallow situation here. Like if we were deeper, I thought was the more.
Louis, if you look at seventeen, you'll have less jams and then you'll um, you'll have a lot more range to look at.
Nine, four, six, nine, four, six, jacks. He'll know Jack ten.
But you've checked an off, bring Jack.
Put it like at forty or something.
See, no, well, look at this. At seventeen, it's not far from twelve, right? Or fourteen, three big blinds more and look at the big size. Big sizes used a lot more now. See what I mean? I guess you don't. You got too many tables.
What you talking about? I didn't, I didn't see, I didn't see.
You didn't see it. Look at this. Three big blinds more, we have bigger sizes appearing all over the place with hands like Jack ten off, for example.
What's Jack ten suited doing though?
It's not in range.
It's, it's shoving pre pop.
But.
Aye, Karaba, look at, look at forty big blinds before I lose my mind here.
Why are we looking at forty big blinds for our fourteen?
I'd rather, I'd rather have you lose your mind.
He wa, he wants to verify his play.
Yes, exactly. That's all. Just wanna verify my thought process.
Don't give it to him, don't give it to him. Don't give it to the terrorist.
Tim, stay out of this, Tim. Geez.
This is appeasement. You give it to him now and then he'll never have the other bet.
It, it will never hand, right?
Look up for fifty, look up at sixty, look up at fifty-five.
Alright, so.
Okay, this, this is what, this is, I feel better now.
Alright, but it's hard to see like front doors and like uh, the one that missed, I think.
Well.
Backdoor is betting plenty as well.
I, I'll be with you. At forty big blinds, I probably would have bet this too.
Yeah. Honestly, if I'm that shallow, if I'm like twelve or fourteen effective, I don't, I just don't have a big size. I'm just range betting, but I bet it's gonna be small. For better or worse.
I find in Sims, there's uh, there's those like somewhat short sex spots where you actually only use a tiny or a bigger size because you wanna have an easy turn jam or you wanna still have play.
Man, this is a, this is a dangerous combo right here. I think since he's only got fourteen behind, I wanna just call here.
Yeah, me too. That's an issue because he never holds a queen.
Like this is a really good check raise candidate, but when he doesn't just burn our equity, when he.
I like it. It's the tiny bet. I think we actually have fold equity. Like what's he do with, you know, nine, eight here? Like he just holds.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, kinda tough, right?
Like if he bets much bigger, we just don't have room anymore.
Hmm.
Yeah, when we're out of position short stack, we just call draws. So this is just an easy call.
Kinda, kinda what Pete.
I mean, I don't hate a bet fold. Cuz it's, we only got a gutter, right?
Yeah. It's a call.
And if, if he's betting range against us, it's gonna be hard to defend his whole range.
So really appealing combo, but at this time, we, we raise like our top pairs and these.
Yeah, it's just gonna be trouble, right? It's gonna be trouble.
You wanna raise, I guess, like uh, the wheels as well, right? Maybe a little bit, yeah, the offsuit wheels, the suit, a little bit of the.
Uh, my thinking at this time, uh, because I'm pretty sure we're getting quite close to the final table right now. That people, at least with like the experience I have, uh, at smaller stakes, that people get extremely tight. So my thinking was like, if he doesn't have a queen, he would fold here immediately.
I don't think we're close to the final table because we have one hundred fifty ends total and this is number sixty. So we still have ninety hands to go.
But it is. I think it was just.
It is.
Just a reasonable, it's just a reasonable raise. I mean, Louis, you looked at the solution as true favorite other combos, but this one, the EV was almost identical. I mean, it's a very reasonable candidate. You need to not overdo it, but it's fine.
What do you guys say here? Is this a limp or a raise?
Thirty-five effective, I like raising this combo.
What do you think the?
What do you think the, 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 the charts say? It's kinda mixed, I bet.
I, I think it's, I think it's limp call in, in the chart.
Okay, raises a lot.
And so we, when we go for a raise and he clicks it.
Well, that's more than a click.
Probably.
That's more than a click.
Position, shout out, that's.
I fold here.
If he clicks it, I call, but that's more, that's more than a click.
Yes, more than.
Anyone calling here?
Nope.
Eh, not at this stage.
I think it's a theory call, but I hate it.
That's the reason I don't open this hand.
Yeah, just click call.
But you don't, Josh, you don't fold this pre.
No, I limp, I limp.
Okay.
Limp call.
Yeah, I think that would be my strategy too.
If I shame, I want to keep the pot small.
It's mostly a raise.
Because he uh, covers me.
Raise call, fine.
You gotta, you gotta do that uh, the cheerleader thing. Be aggressive. Be, be aggressive.
So it's a raise, a raise call, eh?
Nice. Yeah.
I fault, I raise fault, but.
Out of position, this is one of our best queens. Do we raise the flop? It's blind versus blind, so I mean, twenty big blind SPR one, raising the flop is never gonna be a mistake, but blind versus blind? He's gonna pick up the lead here. I mean, we can still shove the river and SPR is one, so I like calling here and maybe like he's betting the turn. There we go.
Oh man, we're just in deep waters. Uh, check.
Louis, sorry, I missed that. Uh, was that a raise call? Uh, I'm sorry, the queen. Jackson, queen, queen, that's up, sorry.
Yes.
The flop, yeah. Okay.
And even queen nine. A little bit crazier here, Ashwin, it's fine.
I'm not finding those queen nines and queen tens.
Okay, thank you.
All at least. Raising the flop, I mean, can we see how it does?
It does not raise the flop, Ken.
It doesn't check, raise the flop?
Well, you think there's, wanna see?
Well, yeah, cuz like I'm always doing this. If I'm making a mistake, I wanna see my mistake.
You raising often here?
Yep. It's my best queen.
That, the, I would say the.
What are you doing with queen? How, how do you, what are you doing with the queen, kings of the world, Ken?
I'd probably four bet them.
You're four betting king, queen?
You know, you could be mixing, it's fine. Calling some, raising, mostly raising. Oh, and look at this. You could check raise all in here, given the SPR.
Yeah. Ken is right. I could.
No, actually, I like.
See if I was making a mistake or not. It's like I just, by my mind, I'm just always raising there.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So is that like, are you taking those kinda lines like final two, three tables, uh, final four tables?
Oh, that's fine. Ken certainly is.
No, I, I like the way he played that queen, queen, jack in.
Interestingly enough, king, queen just.
I think we should fold here.
Fold here?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I definitely think we should fold here. EP, I think first off, this is already like close to.
We're hijacked, basically.
Yeah, six handed, you're right. So if it's six handed, you're definitely getting towards the end of the tournament. Like you don't see six handed play except for like what, final two, three tables?
Maybe final four?
Ooh, fold.
Easy fold, right?
Yeah, this isn't.
That's a cold guys. What do you mean?
It's a cold. Oh, Georgie. I think he might be making.
We had the same spot the other day, LP, that I told you, you remember, final.
It's definitely TPV call.
You were, you were streaming.
I think, I think it's, I, I also.
TPV is a call, I know.
I think it's a call.
So, alright, alright, here. I'm, I'm gonna help you out, George. George, George, check it out, check it out. Where are his bluffs coming from? What is the primary card that he uses for bluffing when you get deeper and deeper in tournaments? If you had to pick one card in the entire deck, what would you pick for your bluffs?
The ace.
The ace, okay, so how much equity does king, queen have against a random ace?
I know, we're not doing well against his uh, jamming.
His bluffs. We're not doing well against his bluffs. We're not doing well against his value. So like, why on earth would you think about calling that in like a uh, in an adjusted range?
On a, on a theory level, it's not useful to talk about this as though it's a polar range. It's a, it's a condensed range.
But he can be jamming like, he can be jamming.
Two days, king, jack off, seven, eight. Exactly, exactly. If we look at the.
Seven, eight, I mean, the. I mean, I know he needs blockers, but uh.
In an ICM spot, it's a suicide call.
How many, how many people is it?
Cause it should more be more ace heavy.
Well, so the thing is, George, we were just talking about like uh, George, they ha, it's six handed at the table when the normal arrangement's eight handed, so like, it's not gonna go six handed unless it doesn't have availability of players at other tables. So you can assume it's like final four tables plus, like it, it's getting relatively.
What level do you think we should go for?
Ten percent.
Uh, I mean, okay, so ten percent of the field, there's eight, hold on, there's eight hundred and fifty people in the tournament, right? So if there's eight hundred and fifty, that would be representative of like ten tables. So like you would, I think it's closer to like actual final table than it would be ten tables, but I mean, look at ten tables.
Look at both.
Yeah.
Look at both. You can see how it adjusts.
Might not change.
What kind of arrangement is this? So we are.
Our average stacks, uh, yeah.
The charts I have with HRC, but it's uh, pre-sold and it's not.
Yes, big stack and there are two small stacks, fifteen, fifteen.
I see him.
On button and uh.
Okay, but this one is not gonna work, I think, right? Because this one is gonna, these ten percent field assume everyone has equal stats.
You can send me the hand and I'll just upload it to HRC if you want.
I think that's a great idea. HRC is gonna give you a pretty good answer here.
I have some HRC pre-sold, like solutions. It's making uh, one point nine uh, big blinds and aces are making twelve. So it's uh.
Yeah, you don't know if your HRC, if your HRC solves are applicable for this exact situation, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sure.
Yeah, but I think like, for me, it's a very simple scenario. At Chippy V, it's close, either makes color fold and at ICM.
It's not close, though. At Chippy B, it makes one point three bigs.
Yeah.
Printing.
Yeah, I'm too, too tight here.
Yeah, I just like, you know, like close is always a little subjective, but actually I wouldn't call it close.
So he went for the call and we won, now we lost. What a bad rhythm.
Yeah, shit, yeah.
I would really like to know about the king, queen, because I, I, I thought it was a clear call, even though we're late in the tournament.
Uh, because for me, with, with ICM, you'd like to know, like Ken is running it. But.
I want to know too, but uh, it's gonna be marginal, I think.
Marginal at best. I think king, queen offsuit is more of an interesting question.
Okay, so what kind of arrangement fits?
King, queen suited, I'm playing like, I'm breaking.
So just find a, just find a spot where it's like a, not the shortest is jamming. Like fifteen jamming into a, a covering stack where it's like at least half of the stack.
I can as soon enough, I just come out.
So something like that, yeah, like so, or no, the other way around. So it would need to be like, look at that eighteen and forty-two might work, or just look at equal stacks. Equal stacks is not a horrible like baseline to measure the situation.
I think this one is better. Uh, eighteen is a bit much though, right?
Well, it's way earlier position. Like you need it to be a wide position to make sense.
Yeah, it must be button, uh.
It must be button. Otherwise, it, it honestly, it kind of gets thrown out the, out the window.
I agree. The reason, the whole reason I was advocating call is because the butt shoving range should be pretty wide.
You can look at that ten, look at that ten. Look at that ten, twenty, 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 forty. Yeah, that one you're on.
Okay, so this would be versus, what is this call? First position cutoff. No, it goes position the small blind, we're facing.
Small blind versus, uh.
We're sorry, R F I from the button. And it's gonna have a R F I versus.
So king queen off is ice, no, king queen off is folding, king queen suited is folding, and this is only ten big blinds, guys. Only ten big blinds.
Now, I take Louis check, mighty checked the wrong one. Go back, go back up so we can see the stat sizes. He's got the button shoving forty, he's got the button forty.
Louis, you're killing me. You clicked, you clicked the wrong one.
It'll be done.
You told me.
Close. No, that one, that one.
I can tell you already, it's gonna be close. It's gonna be a low, uh, E V call for, for calls.
No, no, no.
So, so here, this is ten big blinds. It's folding. Now, it is calling with the suited one. So it's like, look how many chips that the suited ones returning. What is it? Point three, four?
Yeah, point three, and then aces is making seven. So we're looking for point seven, probably double that, so. Probably like somewhere around ace nine, they say there's the, the cost. Ace nine, ace ten, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a fold on I C M. Uh, Ken, did you run it?
It's running, it's your share, it's quite close.
Okay, sure, yeah.
I already ran the first, uh. So you say it. I ran it once already down to twenty-two and a half. Now I'm just gonna run down to ten just to clean up the noise, but it's close. Like if you're playing.
What kind of inputs did you put in on the backend of this?
How many players?
Yeah, what kind of?
I, I just copy pasted the hand.
Yeah, but is it, is it final table?
Is it a ring, it rising T P P?
Uh, twenty-four left, and the payout structure is a bit different because I don't obviously have this.
Yeah, but that's, that's not a big problem, payout structure as well.
Oh, but yeah, if you, if you have a payout structure, it'll be, it'll be reasonable. It seems decent.
If you have twenty-four players that are all really good left, you might want to take the thin margin. If not, you can pass. It's close, right?
While we're looking for like ten percent of aces and look now, the E V is shrinking like ice under the sun.
Yeah, it's close. Say, if you're playing, if you're playing a bunch of that high rollers at J L and all that play on book, go to hide, they're probably gonna take this spot.
And. Can we look at button shoving range? Cause like he shows up here with queen jack off. How's that, uh, how's that fit?
I mean, he's not having, as I said, seven, nine, eight, but.
Yeah, queen jack off makes good sense here, um, as far as his range goes.
Got him jamming eighteen percent.
It's closer than I thought, indeed. I mean, I thought it was, um.
So if he's not finding like, uh, stuff like this, it's gonna be more of a fold, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if he's missing some of the edges around here, like if you locked the strategy and removed that outer pip that's mixing, it's gonna, it's gonna get tighter.
So back to my first point, if you're playing a bunch of high roller, that find a lot of all this stuff, I think it's probably gonna be a fold. And if you don't have.
Those edges are raises, huh? Not all in.
Don't have that much faith in them, then it's very.
Are raises, not all in.
I mean, it's the same, we're saying the same thing, right, Kaylin? I mean, if we, if I take, uh, uh, if we think the guy's capable, then we can call, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, sure, yeah. If you don't think you have a skill edge against the guy's post flop and you think it's a close spot, um, take a flip.
And if we remove all those, if we don't think he's capable, remove all those hands, I'm sure it'll get better.
Did you give him an opening, uh?
Uh, it's just a pure, uh.
I just let H R C do it.
Oh, it's a G two optimal.
These out.
Okay.
Those red hands are, uh, opens, huh? They're not all in, so, Ken, huh? So the edges are, you must be careful saying edges are.
Right, right, right. So.
It's a king ten off, uh, the suited, the edge. I think if I saw it correctly. How king nine suited? It's not, uh.
This is jamming range. So let's take out some of this stuff.
Yeah, but just look at this jamming range. I mean.
This is jamming range here.
This is, yeah, okay, but why would you, uh? I think, I think that's reasonable.
Jack nine, queen nine, probably not, Ken. Offsuit aces.
Yeah, but he shoves more offsuit aces maybe, yeah. If you're going this field, it's a trappy field.
Some of these are raising. The, the ones that aren't jamming here are opening problem.
Okay, run it with that, let's see if it changes.
Of course it changes.
So we only took one percent of hands off. It's two percent.
I would, uh, just for example stake, I would make it a, a tighter jamming range, like a noticeably tighter jamming range, so you can see a clear trend if I was gonna do it. So like, remove. Just remove ones that like, the outer pip of them. So you see where the clear trend is going.
I don't think people is not jamming king nine, uh.
Yeah, I know, I know. We're doing this, it's an experiment.
I would, I would jam king nine, so.
I would jam it too, but then nine, you can take it.
But I also, I would also jam ace four and ace three and ace deuce. At least I might. I think I do. So it's hard to say if they are loose or tight. In a tight scenario, of course, you have to fold.
Do we have stats on this game?
It's so close.
I don't know.
We're down a little bit.
You're talking now hypothetical, I mean, whatever.
It's less of a call.
Yeah, of course.
But we do this.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so like the answer's pretty clear at this point. It's close.
Very.
I think, I think, uh, personally, I'm okay skipping these kind of spots.
Yeah. Thanks for, uh, running it, Ken.
Yeah, thank you, Ken.
So we took queen jack out of his range and you had it in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Uh, don't think we took our queen jack.
Not queen.
I think you did.
I took queen jack off, yeah. Uh, maybe not.
No, we took jack ten, king ten.
Yeah.
But this was the offsuit and, uh. Doesn't matter.
Think I like it.
It was close, it was close.
I, I bet bigger.
Yeah, I wanna go bigger on that river.
Hmm.
People, oh, you have a jamming range, uh, and that's pot's fine.
I like to treat that here.
Red fold?
Yeah.
Yeah, if queen jack, you can. After a reasonable blocks, two calls.
But then, as played, it's a good flop raise as well, right?
You've got a fold now, right?
Uh.
Maybe check raise flop.
I think raising flop is a very good idea as well. Cards, uh, space.
Backdoor.
Yeah.
Low, like lower overcards is often where you have it. We, we don't have too good of a draw, it's only a gut shot, it's not open ended, so we don't mind raise folding it, or bet folding it.
What do you do? What do you do on the river if you hit a queen here and he just blasts you, puts you like, blasts you in?
Christ, you can, uh, call, but now it's a problem.
Yeah, I would just fold here. I mean, i- if he put, he could just put you in a box, hit a queen or jack, like, what are you gonna do?
It's an easy turn four, I think.
Agreed, just fold through.
This is an all in.
Also, okay.
Uh, this is a very clear fold.
I guess three betting ace queen suited, not all in's okay, but I'm not really excited about calling up four bet. A four bet jam, you know, like ace, king suited makes a nice three bet, kings makes a nice three bet. Um, ace queen suited, it's a little, little too weak for me, uh, three bet and then.
I mean, on a button, it's okay, I think. No, nine, it's, it's a suited hand, that's playable, but, uh.
How much I C M? What? How much I C M are we at now?
Well, we're like.
We're at thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
Yeah, if T P V, I would, uh.
No, twenty-seven point five.
All right, we're, we're, we're still at six handed, so it's probably still, we're guessing around twenty-four. I mean, I call on this.
You call.
Yeah. On the button.
Blocker effects, the blocker effects. Eights, nines are not good.
I would call out, out of eight to seven, but.
I would fold like cut off versus hijack, but here I'm calling.
Stone bottom of your range.
Still got. Right, and with, with I C M, we wanna do less of this calling, the speculative hands, right? Like we really just wanna play hands that are good.
I C M, it's a terrible call because you block ace, a king, a king nine, queen nine suited, jack nine suited. So it's more likely you just ask king, queen, or stuff like that.
I would check back.
Probably, right? Because we have a, have a hand that, like when you pick up a draw like this, like you have so much equity here, you're probably winning, right? Do you need to bet here? I don't know. I, I.
But also the, I, I think the motion is often like, bet third pot in position against, uh, Miss T, but.
Yeah.
I don't mind betting it to my stack.
Hijacks on cat too, when they check flop, pretty much. They're not like, they're definitely not cat. Uh, they're gonna float some tens, I think, that are gonna be, uh, in the range, you're gonna call some ten X, they're gonna still have over pairs.
They have to check turn also.
Well, it's good, bet flop.
Flop action was, was hijack, check, call.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's all he checked on. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
But he's gonna check turns a lot, cause we see that flop, we bet flop. I think it's a check.
He shouldn't have lots of tens now, should he?
No, he should, he should flow with a little ace, ten, king, ten type hands.
Jack ten, ten nine.
No, he shouldn't. I mean, he, it's not a theory check call with.
Jack ten.
Check raise. Yeah.
Not jack ten.
Probably gonna mix raises in, uh, calls. I mean, I don't think they're gonna do any of it pure.
His check calling range, I think he needs to have showdown values. I think it needs to be some, it's acting high.
Yeah, I think also ace high sent, uh, maybe king queen, but not a king ten, but maybe king ten if it's, uh.
Maybe king ten, if we bet, we bet one third pot on the flop, so that gives him some room.
It's out of position.
I'm wide.
So we should be double bowing here.
Okay.
Small.
And which their range look like?
After with that, or?
After we bet flop?
Yes.
And, and Louis, you're thinking that turn is small, it just makes sense. Like we have second pair, how, how are we gonna get value from worse if we go big?
Yeah, that's right.
And we don't need to go that big to get folds from like weak jack X, queen X.
Oh, max value.
You got max. Um, is this a call?
No.
No. No, if anything, you would check raise, but not this hand, you can find other hands.
I like the three bet here because this guy is eighteen big blind effective, so what do we do if he shoves? Kind of has to call off and it's like gonna be a very bad scenario.
Yeah, not a good squeeze. I would not be squeezing here. Also, you.
We were using such tiny sizes before, and then we use a huge size here, which is weird. Like, we can get the job done with seven and a half.
Yeah, you're committing yourself first, like any kind of four bet too, like you, you don't ever get to get away from this at this point. Like you're just stuck.
Yeah, so with three bets, four bets, and then we're stuck and then.
Yeah, like this is, this is, this could be disastrous here. Like we're not stoked about this at all.
This is already a disaster.
I would just call it this hand multi-way, I would just fold it from the button.
I think it's a.
I think you just fold.
At I C M.
Yeah, you don't need to go multi-way with the.
Same, of course.
We're in deep waters now in the three hundred, we don't need to.
Yeah. There are spots if I think, if I think one of those players is, is weak, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, this, this is why, this is why.
Yeah, good players. I know what's up.
Yeah, when, when I think the, the flat collar is really weak and that's like a player I want to attack, then I get in there with a bunch of squeezes. But, uh, that's based on the read comes first, right?
Yeah.
Uh, fairly.
Is there any merit in flapping in position?
I think the three bets too large, actually.
Chippy V, maybe. I C M, it's a suicide call here.
Yeah, but the three bets are also pretty large, ten.
Okay, well, we, we reached seventy-five hands, so that puts us exactly out for it. So do you wanna stop here and pick up, uh, where we left on Friday?
It's up to you guys, uh.
I'm not doing, I'm not doing nothing else.
I'm fine to keep going. I'm just, uh, I just have a couple of tables up and then I'm with you guys.
Yeah, uh, either way, it's me, I don't care. I'm, I'm here, I'm off today.
Try that.
What about you, Louis?
I, I'm done to continue. It doesn't matter for me.
All right.
I'm in and irrelevant.
As always, Scotty.
Let me know when you have a hundred big.
I don't, I don't know that we wanna jam nines from a small blind with fourteen bigs, that's a.
What are you gonna do there?
Uh, limp call.
Thank you, uh, limp.
Never, never.
Yeah, his hands too good, man. His hands way too good.
If you live, Eric checks back to disaster.
There's always an overcard on the flop.
Look it up.
Yeah. Seventy percent of the time is, there's an overcard or something like that, all right? Uh, that's terrible. If I shame.
Right. So thank, all pairs.
Thanks.
The sevens are already.
Okay.
You're welcome, Tim.
We're looking at, on the, on the, on the whiz.
Yeah, you can honestly, like, you could probably find an arrangement, final table one, just to kind of verify if it shifts the strategy. I think it still plays the same, though.
Cause like if we're talking about good players and we're talking about like a playing a somewhat G T O strategy, he should have sacred limp a lot. He, he wants to go along against us with some junky. With some junky a sacks and he just jams in our face and then we snap, right? That's what the sand is supposed to do.
But, and the other thing is.
Good players, yes.
Yeah, and the, the other thing is when, when he limps behind and we see an overcard, we don't worry about it because he raises so many of his good overcard hands.
So many, exactly.
And we go break.
And we, and we play, we play poker.
I feel like we looked at a spot like. I feel like we looked at a spot like this the other day and it was limping like stronger hands, actually, in I C M and, uh, just going more with, okay, so there it is, yeah. It goes all in up to eight now. So the other one, they were slipping all those.
Um. Same spot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it shifted to, towards stronger hands. I thought it was tens, though.
Five max, I C M, as the short stack on the table, uh, this is a, a race. But, yeah, shoving with eights.
And I just think a lot of players, you know, they jam so much of their good hands from the small blind, they don't really limp enough good hands, and I think that makes them very exploitable.
I get all sorts of fans.
I think, uh, here, we check, check, we lead on the deuce, that's really good. But when the king comes, I don't think we should bet.
Nah, can't close, so. I mean, block bet, but what worse can call? That's the problem now, right? What are you trying to get called by when you block bet here?
Four. And bear. Can call. Ace high, can call. No, no. But in general, I don't like bets. Can a min bet, they do a lot of min betting. Min three betting, I mean.
So, final two tables?
Whoa, nice, uh, shame.
Pretty deep stacks.
It's nine handed now, so
So, uh, was there, was, did his chip stack jump right from the
And it's nine handed, so should be final table.
This is final table, if it's nine handed.
No, it's not.
It's not G G?
It's still seventy five years of.
We didn't chip up.
Yeah.
Okay, so
Close to fifty.
Yeah, he did, yeah, he did, he went from twenty to thirty two, huh? Oh, did he win a pot? Okay, maybe, but it's also nine handed, like, if it's nine handed, um
If it G G, it should be final table, not that, or is that three hundred dollar, otherwise, hold on.
Yeah, like, it's a, it's it's an eight max tournament, so this has to be final table, right?
Yeah, I think so.
We're gonna chip up when it's the final table, so
Louis, it's an eight max, it's an eight max tournament, and we're nine handed.
You went twenty nine to thirty seven.
We won a hand.
Thirty two to Oh.
So is it a glitch? Are we just playing nine handed marathon now, or?
Look, is go back to where we had for our first hand at the nine handed table. The hand before that, how many chips do we have compared to the first hand, and then we'll know. So the hand before jacks, or a hand or two before the jack, jack hand.
Are you guys paying attention? Feel like I'm arguing, it's a bunch of people are following. He wouldn't have bought here, this is the first The first
Yes, fifteen, fifteen before Louis. Go back about
Am I crazy? Like, where where else in the tournament would it be nine handed? Where, when would it go from five to nine, if it's not the final table?
So we have eighteen, we go from eighteen
As a, as someone paying attention, that's, I think that's a pretty good question, huh, Louis? What what do you think?
Why, why are you triggered, my friend? Take it easy.
We went from eighteen to twenty two bags at the final table.
Well, I'm just pointing out who's paying attention, and maybe who's not paying attention.
Take it easy.
Take it easy. Take it easy.
Take it easy. Right? So here, like, we're winning hands, because I'm arguing, because I know you're not paying attention, and like, we're winning hands here.
But I'll pay right here. We are also arguing because you don't pay attention, Louis, because
Eighteen big
Nine handed.
Thank you, Josh.
And the final table is nine handed, not eight handed.
I know that, but we didn't chip up.
Yes, we did, we go from eighteen
We did chip up.
Eighteen to twenty two, you guys think it's it's the start?
Click one hand further.
Oh, but we we took it, we're only V piped, so we don't even know.
Twenty two, from eighteen
There's hands that we're not even looking
Four big blinds, we tip up.
We're cut off, what are we next to hand?
What are you talking about?
Cut off, what are we the next hand?
Eighteen big blinds, eighteen point four five.
But we're only looking at V pip hand, so if he's not hijacking next hand, we're missing hands.
Oh, yeah, we're only looking at V P
But now, oh, when it went to final table, but we missed hands in between.
Okay, so I guess you guys are right, this is F T.
Thank you.
There's still a supreme leader, it's okay. He was just testing us. Right, Louis?
He's just like us, he's stubborn.
Right. Takes a stubborn brain to be a poker player.
Yeah. Keep your hat banging against the wall. Spike one tournament. What we do?
I mean, I I'm gonna say, I wouldn't even open sixes, to be honest.
Too nitty.
From
Uh, hijack.
Cut off, hijack, hijack.
Low jack, oh, I can open it.
I think we're in I C M jail, right? With this guy at fourteen, the other guy at twenty five, I think, and especially because it's a big tournament.
Hmm.
I think
I don't know.
It's a fault, right?
Not jail, we have thirty big blinds, so
Definitely in I C M jail.
He he can't, he can't put us all in, uh, that easy, because you have thirty big blinds.
Are we in in I C M jail, or am I just too too nitty in this?
No, but we're
No.
We are in a difficult I C M position, yes.
I was muted, and I I was talking, and didn't realize I was muted.
I hate that.
Did Louis mute you?
Repeated. He he probably did, he probably got, he got tired of hearing me point out that it's the final table, I understand now.
Yeah, it's not because you're fighting off in your kitchen, or God knows what you're up to, right?
I was just pouring some water.
No way.
Uh, this is probably close to a fold, if not like the bottom of the opening range, right?
I agree.
When we open and we see that here, I don't think we can double barrel without picking up a spade.
Same. Yeah, even then, it's kind of like iffy, right? Yeah, and then I I honestly hate this bluff catch. I I just don't know what we're targeting here, sure, the flush draws missed.
So try that, can you tell us your reasoning here?
And the the thinking first was like, oh, every draw miss, and when I called, and I was like, no, king ten, right? And, yeah, so I I I thought immediately after calling that it was a mistake calling. Uh, but it it was like, yeah, nine, ten didn't get there, both flush draw misses, but yeah, I still think
Talking about flush draws, my friend, do you think having a spade in your hand here is good or bad?
It's bad, uh, for
It's bad? Why?
End of story.
Blocking the flush draw, the lower ones.
Exactly, so like, it's not like, uh, we're in that deep waters here, this is an easy fold.
Yeah, I agree.
But I like that you keep going at it.
Man, see, this is This is
Closer to a fold, eh?
This is, I think, a clear fold.
Yeah.
Like, uh, there's an, there's a, this guy opens, so like, his collision factor goes way up, like, the probability of this guy going busto and you making money is higher, and I think defending the fringes of your range, you're just
Actually, only one stack covering him, uh. So it's not hard, it's difficult for him to cover busto.
And if I was, if I was
I was saying busto the other
I had a read or something, I want a three bet.
An opener is
Yeah, three betting to
Our calling theory, our calling here is such a gift to the twelve point two five.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, did the, I thought the twelve big blind guy opened, I, yeah, I'm wrong, you're right.
Uh, opener covers us, it's it's bad.
I still think being covered here makes it way less of a get involved spot, I just
Uh, that I agree.
I like getting out of the way here.
Easy fold.
This is a fold.
Wow, that's a jam.
You're the second smallest, no, third smallest.
How did this happen?
You can't jam here.
This is a fold, man, like, it's an E P opener, plus a flatter, and you are blocking the bottom of their opening ranges, like, tens and nines and eights here are just like, you would rather have pocket sixes here than those hands.
Yeah, on the other hand, that's two big stacks.
Loads.
Pretty wide.
I don't know, I'm dumbing this personally, but
I think it's close.
Yeah, I Chippy V, chippy V.
I don't think it's a crazy, I don't think it's a crazy jam, uh. We don't, yeah, I mean, we have some I C M pressure, but we're kind of low, at some point, we do need chips, this is not the worst hand to get
The second guy sways wakes up with tens or better, that's pretty rare.
What is that? Yeah, exactly, right?
Second guy First guy
Second guy can have
Can be pretty loose, because he's original big stack, so I don't know, I mind jamming here.
Hold on, what 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 do we think about the second guy's range, given that he's playing against, he's got the maximum I C M pressure here, and he's playing nine point, nine point eight two, and he's decided to put
Can have tens, tens, and
He can have tens and jacks, but queens, kings, eight is probably right.
I think eleven tens is a fault here, and I see him.
That's close.
So just find one where you're like, find one where an E P big stack opens and a big and a big stack flats, and then it's like you're a smaller stack, like, I wouldn't even care too much about the rest of the arrangements. So like, forty forty, four seventy, what looked like a good one, there was a fifty four seventy.
Yep, I think he did.
This one is fifteen from the cutoff, it's thirty four, uh, forty.
Yeah, I mean, that probably works too, that that probably works too.
What about the smaller stacks?
I don't depend how big your own stack is, I mean, if you're
Multiway, small blind, this is from the small blind, um, why are we looking at the small blind? Okay, so button, we should be looking at the cutoff, I think, Louis, is the fifteen big blind stack in our arrangement.
Where can I get there?
So look at this, okay, like, it's not even close in this arrangement.
It's not even a close spot, because the seventy big blind stack is a big stack, so they should be open tighter, so it's not close, spot.
Are you saying not close as in the arrangement, like, you should find a different arrangement?
Yeah, if
Look at like, uh, look at that thirty eight
Big stack, it it's different.
Hey, look at that thirty eight sixty eighteen, yeah, look at that guy, that, this one should be close.
But that's more close, but still, yeah, yeah, you don't have the buttoness, uh, the the cutoffs. It's hard to find the similar spot, I mean, and I think it's close, I I it could be a fault, uh, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know, Louis.
I just think it's close.
Do you freeze? Yeah, click that one, or, uh, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't really care, I would just do that one that you were looking at, the thirty eight sixty one, wherever that one went.
I think this one is good, this is it.
Yeah.
Thirty eight open, sixty call, and then
Look at eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
And there's a short stack here.
Yep, yep, and the shorty. Is that the same spot, though? I mean, it shouldn't be the cutoff, I don't think. Uh, it's gonna be low jack, hijack, cutoff. So cutoff in hero positions, right? You gotta move low jack first to hijack. All right. There you go, now it should be cutoff. Hero? No, 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 hero is the cutoff, not the flatter.
Okay, cutoff, right? No, he rose button.
Is it button? I might be wrong, no, I am wrong, you're right.
He rose button, self folding.
Yeah, it's close.
Going with with tension.
So I think I say it's close.
So this is
I think the calling is the worst option, I, if I was to play this, I would jam or fold.
I wouldn't call it.
Dream scenario.
Nice dream, dream.
Worked out, it was like a dream scenario.
And then dream was to go all in, and then get called by two players.
Is this not a jam?
Yeah, it's in town.
Twenty five?
Seven, seven
The seven big blind stack?
Oh, no, man, I I would jam this, I think, uh, like, he should be opening wide enough from eighty. I I think jamming here is probably okay.
Uh, jamming is, uh, plus a V, yes, for sure.
Oh my goodness, that river.
That river. I go.
Uh, I kind of like jamming this, I think.
Yeah, it's not that crazy.
I like folding this, I think.
Yeah, I would fold pre flop.
I like calling this, I think.
Good days, happy days, that's the term.
Uh, twenty seven, this is a fold, man, this is
So try that, try that, you're gonna do me a favor, okay? You're gonna fix them up that thirty thousand dollar here, okay, a little bit?
You're gonna invest it.
You're gonna check out like tools to improve your I C M game a little bit, tools like H R C, tools like H M Izer. Uh, I C M Izer, I mean, or if you want something that is really, really good, right now, we have a pre flop academy as well, there's a rebate for the poker coaching members, and that thing does marvels. Uh, there's a trainer that goes with it, that does I C M, so you can train the final table, and then we're gonna have, like, this is not an open, I don't think so.
No.
Do the connectors go way down in value?
Yeah, we need to block it.
Yeah, I I find, I, all this I C M is like my, uh, biggest leak, or how would you say it?
Oh, it's fine, it's fine, we've all been there, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, we're not, it's not beating up or pointing out like, like, you're making big mistakes, it's just, these are things that could improve your game.
And this is, I take a very good one.
Funny enough, this is actually, yeah, I was gonna say, funny enough, this is probably okay, I just don't know if you want to be doing it into the the fifty, but maybe, maybe this is fine, like
But just maybe it's
And and that needs a lot of courage, with no tool teachers.
Shopping right.
Oh, my goodness, try that, you're up to all good.
It's a good flop to do it on, but there were different, the wrong combination problem.
This guy can bust you, like, you you are gonna just get put in the box here a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, God, that's like the worst.
Christ, oh my, what are we gonna do now? We need like, run or run or perfect, six, seven.
Oh, my God.
Or what?
This is good on, good on Good on Steve poker.
Wait, we're donking the turn?
No, 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 he check raised, so this is okay, like, but
Okay, we check raised, no, okay, I'm sorry, all right, sorry, sorry.
Oh, now you're gonna shut down. You gotta shut down, right?
He's picking up ten eight.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God. How sticky is he?
This guy broke his monitor on this hand, he literally broke it. You owe him like two hundred bucks, man.
Oh, God.
He's so pissed.
Every
I don't think it's a good one, it goes check, check on the flop, so sometimes we might have leads there, but it's too broadway, and we're like, very close to one pip on order jack, I think this kind of hand want to check it out.
But doesn't he miss a C bet on that flop?
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, not if he has ace, king, or something, like, he could be checking here.
Depends, right, because he doesn't have a huge risk premium, and then that big stack against big stack is supposed to put control a little bit.
I wish small blind, I thought we were a big blind.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's also three ways, it's three way tie for fourth place, basically, like, he should be pretty tight.
Yeah, so you should check her, I think, very often, but he gets you, because and then this king is absolutely terrible for you.
You lose against everything here, like, literally
Bad as it gets, you should never bet here.
Yeah, like
We got punished.
Call it off, call it off, he could be bluffing, he could be bluffing.
Don't do it.
What if he's bluffing, guys? We got bluffed out, we got bluffed out.
Never a bluff.
No can.
He was bluffing with queen, jack, two pair, that's the problem.
Uh, you could jam this. You could, could you raise this ever from the big blind, king nine suited? Probably not.
Especially when you don't have spades, I think it's a good And
Uh, two, uh, pretty small stacks now, that's how you preserve a stack a bit.
And we get that?
Yeah, get those chips back, man.
Yeah, so one issue I see here with your sizing is that you've been trying to steal from the big line a lot, right? And every time you tried to steal was a big bet. Now that you have it, you bet small, so you want to be cautious here, if you're gonna take these lines like earlier, you need to bet the same here, like, pot.
Dude, yeah, honestly, this is a great spot to polarize, there's a million bluffs available, and like, you've got a pretty good hand, I think a big bet is in order there.
Like
Yeah, I love
Sixty percent.
Yep, something like that, half to sixty, so
That's a little bit wide.
This is a bit spicy, but, you know, it's okay.
I think, you know, you're gonna invest me thirty four thousand in learning I C M more. I think, you know, you're gonna invest some of your thirty-four thousand in learning ICM work. But if I'll say one thing, like, the, the thing about ICM is it's no shame to sit back and watch other people bust. That is always the game. When you have a spot, you're allowed to sit back and watch other people bust.
Yeah, that's how you make money. You make money by folding. That's the whole idea with the ICM stuff, right?
Also, here's a good trick for you, Toddman.
Especially as a medium stack, otherwise you have to fight for it.
Do not hero-call people on four-liners. Okay? And again, here, look at the suits you block. You block the bluffs with your eight, your, your five of clubs. So this is a very bad hero call.
I don't think the five's that important, but.
Yeah, but still, you're blocking the flush. You're blocking like a five, king, five, maybe.
If it was a nine, it was a more, uh, more of a thing.
Yeah, 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 but it's still.
It's still a thing, yeah, true.
A four-liner, so we just never call here.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the jack here is a bluff cat. I mean, I mean, the, having a king is a bluff catcher almost.
Can we tribute that this ace-five-four hand play with blocker? I think ace-five and ace-six want to call and like, maybe the, the eight.
So I think.
So you want to preserve your stack a bit, so you.
Yeah, just call.
Pretty good flop.
Do we bet that flop? Quarter? Yeah.
That's fold, yeah.
That's an easy ICM fold as well, I think.
Uh, as a short stack, is it?
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, you just don't need to be going to town with all this. You just, you under-realize because there's so many flops. You're like, it's thin, I guess if you fold.
Yeah, but every pair can jam, man. Not that, uh, we could do. Nice.
This one is, I think it's this one, yeah.
Oh, this night, this is nice.
Seventeen here, you're not gonna make much of a mistake, but.
This is how we win tournaments.
If you min raise here and then this guy goes all-in, this guy calls, you could fold. So like, there's a way around it. And do the.
If you min raise, you, you can get some light rejam from small blind, which are great, and then you can just snap call.
Uh, yes, see the run out.
Oh, yeah, it's probably aces, kings, and then. The river scan must have been sweating so hard in here.
Wow, man, like.
Stand for a second, bear. How did the guy with king call with his monitor broken?
To be honest, like, that river card right there was worth thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it's like a fifteen-thousand-dollar ten.
Even more than like the actual, yeah, more than the actual dollar value you get from that ten. Just the equity and having that big of a stack at this point, like, it's so valuable.
Jam almost any two over these players because they're all so scared.
Yeah, dude, you can, you can make them miserable at this point. Like, that is the spot. It's the hand that won you this tournament.
That's how we went down, that's it.
Easy game. You got one, I think that's okay. But when you pick up equity here and it's kind of weak, I don't think you should double barrel. You should check and give up here.
No, yeah, once, once you've already bet once, he's just calling with kings and queens, basically.
Yeah, so you should not probably bet that time. This is just a scam. So we just all, it's fine.
Several broken.
I thought, yeah, I thought we were gonna suck out there.
It's an open end.
No, it's a straight, Josh. Look again.
It's open ender.
I, I think it's probably fine to bet here. I don't think this is crazy.
Yeah, I think this is an okay call. I think it's thin, but I think it's still a call.
Yeah, then like the, the lead, the, probably don't need to limp.
Yeah, you can put so much pressure on the twenty-five with that two-point-eight-seven there.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I don't think I have a limping range here. I think I'm range opening into the twenty-four guy.
This situation, yes.
Oh, we found the call. That's not good.
Check, check, blast. Yeah, you get better kings to fold, you get some aces to fold. I think it's okay. That's a good fold.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we, are we not reshoving this eight, just calling?
Yeah, no, I think he played it pretty well.
Yeah.
We made good, we made money with that.
Casual aces heads up.
Swear to God, guys, I'm about to fold the nut flush because he has a straight flush. I'm folding it. I'm clicking fold right now.
All right, you gotta show the hand if you fold a hand that good.
Jesus Christ. Oh, my God.
Was it a one-card, was it one-card straight flush, I assume?
Yeah, it's one-crush rate flush, exactly.
I don't like it's two.
But if it works.
Are we playing that we don't fold anything pre-flap here? I mean, uh, from the button?
Almost, yeah.
Like eighty percent.
But, but what's going on?
Yeah, this sound is a disaster.
Why do we call and keep baronning?
He just bluffs a lot, I just.
Hey, he's floating to, to, to bluff that turn.
He just says, I don't believe you have it, so I'm gonna bet and steal it.
Hey, sorry.
Yeah, but we got to bet the river if we have this plan. We have to jam the river.
He also showed down. You can't, uh.
Oh, six, that's a pretty, pretty light call. He needs a heart and his end call and calling toward. White, white.
Our hero is, uh, uh, very aggressive.
He's bluffing a lot. That's why he's getting called thin now.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, this is a scam.
Wow.
No-deal flags going up here, huh?
They are badly. Oh, a ten. Bet, call. That's good. Check, check. Oh, my goodness. Hate on them.
The nuts.
That's a hell of a hand.
Watch him showdown with an eight to the other.
I was open for making a deal, but he didn't want to make a deal.
Oh, that's seven, that's seven. This is when you break your wrist.
Hey, he doesn't have queen jack. Oh, you got the, yeah.
He tried to push you off a straight when you had the nuts.
I think there's a pretty bad, uh, ratio.
Shuff, that's bad shuff, shuff.
And that, my friends, is how you win thirty-four thousand dollars by misclicking into a three-hundred. Starting with fifteen big blinds and then giving them hell all the way.
That's wild.
Deal on G G. Very well done, man.
Well done, yeah. At least, you know, you played, uh, very aggressive. That is what I like.
Yeah, I was looking at, uh, I was looking at the final two tables and you had like two ten-k regs at the final table, like, people that are like top-ten players in the world kind of stuff.
Very nice, man. So make sure you, make sure you like, uh, stay tight on the bankroll management. Don't move up too fast. Two days ago, you got the G G Masters twenty-five final table as well, right?
Yes.
So very nice, man. Keep on.
Yeah, they tried to sell your action.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, thanks for like looking through the hands. Uh, I know I have a lot to learn and uh, just interesting to see how you think about the hands and the like. I'm surely gonna invest some of the money in, uh, all them resource calculator, uh, pre-flap academy and all that stuff.
Yes, sir, my friend.
Good, you should.
That's very useful stuff.